Members of council, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm Mark Peterson, Fire Chief. Tonight, we're going to go through the Fire Emergency Services Budget, and so we'll just go ahead and get started. So, the Fire Department fulfills the mission through four core services: Response Operations, Emergency Management, Community Risk Reduction, and Safety and Support Services. And as you can see, we fit into the Safety and Health area of the core services. And some of the budget highlights are that we've got six firefighter positions were added through a SAFER grant. The SAFER grant runs until November of 2015. It pays for 9% of the salary and benefit expenses that are covered by the grant. We also see an increase in Valley Communications line item, and that's because Valley Communications' medical costs and their capital facilities have increased in costs. One of the other things we did was converted an Assistant Fire Marshal to a Fire Marshal to improve inefficient and time-consuming impacts. We're on page 3-7-7. The cost of the department was it increased our budget by $24,000. In the same token, one of the things that we look at is our on-the-job injury and health and wellness of our firefighters. So, we converted a Lieutenant to a Captain position to start looking into strategies to reduce line-of-doody injuries. Some of these injuries happen over a period of time, so when somebody hires onto the department, we're trying now to address issues such as lifting and healthy eating habits and those kinds of things so that it becomes a part of the norm versus, as we've seen over the years, some of our injuries are cumulative, and so we're paying out high OJI costs towards the end of the career.
Just a question, when you hire somebody on, are you allowed to ask if they have on-the-job injuries?
When we hire somebody on, we actually put them through a doctor's physical, and it's part of the law enforcement firefighter's pension program physical, and they go through some of that. Unfortunately, like this year, we had one person slip through that had a back injury, and they couldn't do the essential functions of the job, so we actually terminated them before they really got to the fire academy.
So, you can see what skill level they're at now, but you can't necessarily go back and see if they've had any significant injuries in the past?
No, we can't. Okay. So, a couple of, these are just two of our performance indicators, and one of them, of course, is response time. And we had a resolution back, go 2009, I believe it was, on the aspirational response time goal, which is seven and a half minutes 90% of the time. That means 90% of the time, our response time is seven and a half minutes from the time the crews are notified to the time we arrive on scene or better. So, the slowest there would be seven and a half minutes, and we're meeting that goal. Again, the other is Improvement Plan Targets. I really can't explain what that means, but as we look through different functions of the organization, for example, in emergency management, after an incident, we look at that, how do we improve? How do we make sure that we're looking at the incident and having lessons learned on that? Okay, next. One of the things our organization went through since about November of last year, a little bit more than that, is we looked at our mission, vision, and values of the organization. And we actually had, this was again similar to CED, where the entire organization was a part of this concept or part of building this. And they came up with the Pride, Integrity, Leadership, Accountability, and Respect values. Now, those are really cool words on paper, but they went one step farther, and they developed guiding principles for each one of those values. And I could put them up there, but again, it would be a lot of text for you to see, but it really identifies what that means to us. What does pride mean in our organization? What does leadership mean in our organization? And again, we came up together as a vision statement and a mission statement, and it actually mirrors what the city's vision and mission is. And if, as you can see, the mission is action words: Responding, Reducing, Building, Adapting. So, we want to keep those as action words, not past-tense type words, or just like build or whatever. Okay, next. So, some of our performance indicators are compliance with the National Incident Management System, or the IMS system, which is required by, under the Presidential Declaration, back in September of 2001. In this, we really enjoy 100% compliance on that. In fact, we take quite a lot of pride in our incident management abilities. We have people that are instructors. They instruct in the region on incident management, and it's come to fruition for us. Last summer, when we had that major fire up in the Regency Woods area, we were able to communicate with multiple jurisdictions, not only from within King County, but outside of King County, and Pierce County, and Snohomish County, because we all operate under that same thing. Average response time in minutes to priority one calls is 508. In the book, it says 514, but I did some checking, and it's actually 508. After arrival of fire, this is another thing that firefighters' pride is, can I keep it to the room of origin or the building of origin? And 96.6% of the time, we've kept it either in the building or room of origin. So, as you can see, our, calls for service are going up every year. So, from 2009 to 2013, we've had a 7% increase in the number of calls that were going on. And as you can see, the trend line there, that continues to go up. So, what types of incidents are we going on? 77% are, excuse me, 76% are EMS, or Emergency Medical. 3% are fires, and then in between, you have all the other, the false alarms, you have the good intent service calls, and the other types of natural or weather-type events.
Where would responding to freeway incidences?
That's under your EMS, under motor vehicle collisions. Now, if we responded to a freeway on a car fire, that would show up under your fires.
Okay. Do you have any statistics on how often and?
Yes.
It seems like at least once a day.
Actually, earlier this year, the mayor had requested that information from us on freeway responses, and we average about two hours a day throughout the year up on the freeway on some sort of response of one type or another. And because of the hazardous conditions that freeways present, especially with the speed limits and everything, we actually send more resources up on a freeway to comply with the state laws to ensure that we have safety on the scene for our responders.
Do we get any reimbursement from the state?
No, we don't.
So, every jurisdiction does this?
Yes, ma'am.
We just happen to be on the busiest freeway?
Some, now like Bothell Fire Department, they charge for motor vehicle collisions on the freeways and on their city streets.
Who do they charge?
The insurance company of the...
Why don't we do that?
Good question. It's something that we've never really brought up. It's something that we could do, we've just never tried doing that at this time.
We may, this may be one of the items we can talk about in legislative priorities. It could be something that we might want to see, whether other jurisdictions might want to join with us in talking to the state. It's a heavy lift, because the state doesn't have any money either, but we've talked about having the state at least participate. It's a great free service that the state gets from all the local jurisdictions.
Can we get a copy of that report that you did?
Sure.
I'd be curious to see it. I just thought about that, because it seems like there's rarely a day that you aren't out there, at least once, and sometimes it's multiple times.
Multiple times, and we could have...
And I know it's 167 and 405.
Right, any state highway. So, we could be on three different places on the freeway at one time, just because of the backups and the ancillary collision.
That's a lot of resources.
It is, and it's a lot of time sitting up on that freeway, which is time taken away from the folks on the city.
Exactly. Thank you.
One of the other things is our public outreach. We've done a lot in public outreach in the last couple of years. Our station tours, we still conduct station tours, we have about 19 of those. But the one big number there is the firefighter visits. We get all sorts of requests for firefighters to come visit either schools, or, you know, we've had neighborhood picnics, or, you know, there's just all sorts of those types of requests. Another request is the ride-alongs. Potential firefighter candidates would like to ride along. We've allowed others to, community members to do ride-alongs to see what it is we do and how we do things. So, it's a good educational tool for folks. Again, for 2015, 2016, continue to work on our incident management. That's again, one of those things that you have to continually practice and hone that skill. Another thing we're looking at is our response times and reliability of vehicles and how they're deployed. Always continually evaluate that. So, we're looking at response times, we're looking at data all the time to make sure that we're staying ahead. The third bullet point is collecting the data, again, to create these reports that show value, similar to the freeway responses. And then, again, getting into the schools and the public outreach. We feel that that's important. Well, now, we're going to go to page 380 in your book, and Safety and Support Services. And Safety and Support Services is what supports the folks doing the job out in the street. So, without the Safety and Support function, which is your logistics folks to get the equipment, or your planning folks to be able to look at trends, to be able to look at things and forecast out in the future, or provide map books, these are things that really help us provide the service that we do. So, one of the things that we had to do is, especially this year with the implementation of the new CAD system, was we had to look at our mobile data terminals in the vehicles. Prior to, oh gosh, a couple of years ago, Motorola stopped supporting the old system that allowed it to talk to the ValleyCom. So, then we had to go to air cards on the vehicles in order to talk with the ValleyCom, and those were, we were getting a lot of drops. So, then we looked at changing the modems and going to a modem system to give us more reliability so that the computers would stay up longer. The other thing that happened this year is that Washington State Survey and Rating Bureau came in and evaluated our department. They have kind of changed their standards for evaluation, and they came in and looked at our department. They don't only look at the training of the department, the response deployment model, they look at the apparatus, but they also look at the water systems throughout the region. So, Public Works plays a key role in that. GIS plays a key role in it, and the dispatch center. So, they're looking at everything to come up with classifications, and they use those classifications to set insurance rates. So, when a business wants to come into town and they look at their insurance rates, the first thing they look at is what class the Fire Department is. So, we maintain a Class III rating this year, thanks to Public Works and the record-keeping they kept, especially in the water systems, and fleet maintenance, and those kinds of things, really helped us out. One of the other things, go back one slide, just now.
Okay, Class III, what are the ranges and where does that?
It goes from 1 to 10. So, 10 is absolutely no fire protection at all. A 1 is you have everything. There's more resources than you know what to do with. And right now, no one in the state is a 1. I believe Seattle's a 2.
And so, have we been at 3 for a while?
Yeah, we've been at 3 for as long as I can remember. So, yeah. Can we go back one slide? The other thing we're looking at is fleet maintenance and replacement of our vehicles. And so, our logistics folks went through and evaluated all our apparatus and looked at the condition of our apparatus, met with fleet maintenance, met with finance to look at a good replacement schedule for our vehicles, so that we always have good vehicles on the road at any time, and they're reliable and well-maintained. The other thing is that in the left corner there, you see the hazardous materials rig. We call it the bread truck. That truck's about a 1988 model vehicle, and it's overloaded with equipment, it's underpowered, and this year, we're going to go ahead and replace that. We've got funding to replace that vehicle with something that can carry the weight and the equipment that we need. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the things we're looking at is our fitness incentive program. How do we reduce injuries? How do we make sure that our folks are ready to do the job? And more importantly, when they retire, they retire out of here healthy. They don't carry with them a lot of injuries or illness or that kind of thing. So, we're really focusing this year, or next year, on our health and wellness programs and our fitness programs to ensure that, you know, we have good, healthy firefighters serving our community. So, one of the other things we're looking at is Standards to Cover Document, which is how do we cover the city? How do we deploy our resources, making sure that we're doing it the most efficient and effective way? The other thing is, with our logistics side, there's so much equipment, and it's expensive equipment. So, it's something that we have to really look at through an asset management program. And so, we're going to look at a good asset management program so that we can take and replace equipment on an annual basis versus having to replace everything at once and try to extend those costs out over a longer period. The same thing with the capital replacement plan, and looking at some of the higher-priced equipment that we have. Again, the health and wellness of our workforce, and one of that is to work with the community, the medical community, going out and talking to different medical providers such as Valley Occupational, or Proline Surgeons, or the different physical therapy places, to find out what we can do to help expedite getting people back to work in a timely fashion. Community Risk Reduction, that's a department that we've really kind of suffered in a little bit. We've got two, back in 2009, we lost two inspectors, and yet the city grew. And so, they've been kind of struggling to keep up with the workload. But some of the things they've done is they've identified areas requiring hazardous materials inspections. There's a lot of facilities, especially down in the valley floor, that have hazardous materials. What they have, sometimes we don't know, and so, we've actually assigned a hazardous materials inspector to go out and take inventories and find out who has what, and make sure that they're complying with the federal and international fire codes and the federal We also looked at, because of the reduction in the workforce, we have to prioritize our inspections to ensure that we're meeting the high hazard occupancies, that we're really focused on the health and the safety of our community and the firefighters that are having to go into some of these buildings. And these guys have done a great job of identifying some of the occupancies that have hazardous conditions inside them, that they notify the response ops crews and let them know that, you know, where these hazards are.
How much contact do you have between some of the pipelines companies? And I know there should be trainings and...
Yeah, actually, we've been in contact with Olympic Pipeline, in fact, working with Public Works to renew the franchise agreement with Olympic Pipeline. And some of the areas that we've identified was training for hazardous conditions on the pipeline, and also from the emergency management side, what types of catastrophes could impact the whole city. And so, those are things that are going to be addressed in the franchise agreement that's coming up.
Yeah, also, I just recently got some correspondence from Phillips 66, he's an owner of business, that alerted me to some trainings and some things that they had, and it looked like it was primarily sent just to businesses. I wondered, do they also forward things on like that to you?
Yes. Yeah, we get notifications from like Puget Sound Energy, some of their training classes. We get a notification from some of the pipelines. Couple of years ago, I believe it was Phillips 66 donated a foam trailer to us, and part of that, they sent, we sent three firefighters to Texas to get some training on how to use that foam trailer. And Phillips paid for that trip. Okay, back one slide. Okay. The other area we looked at is alarm systems for multifamily dwellings. And so, in the 2009 code, we required that most of these occupancies had to update their alarm systems, so to bring it up to current code. There was no grandfathering of that. And so, we're working with the apartment community now to ensure that they're bringing their alarm systems up to current code. As you know, that when you're in a multifamily dwelling, you're only as safe as the most careless person. And so, if they don't have a good alarm system, it may be too late before you know that there's a fire. So, we're asking for an alarm system that notifies all the building when there's a fire.
A question, do you allow them to turn that over?
We just started on that this year, and we're working with them, so if they're asking for extension, as long as they're working towards a resolution. The other thing we're working with is the information technology folks on implementing a records management system. Right now, we use Zoll Records Management for the fire site. They also have one for the inspection site, so that the folks can go out in the field and actually do fire inspections in the field and be able to capture that on a tablet, so that they can get the most effective use of their time by being out in the field versus having to go out in the field, do the inspection, then come back and have them to do the reporting, input of the reporting. So, we're working on that and getting that up. Okay? So, as you can see in the accomplishments, they did 1,751 inspections. That's about 30%. We had 1,362 business inspections, 389 new inspection, new construction. We expect that to go up with the amount of plan reviews I'm seeing come across Cory's desk. We've issued 558 fire code permits, 317 construction permits, and this is 2013, 729 plans reviewed. Again, that number's going to be going up. The other thing that they do is, in Community Risk Reduction, is investigate all our fires within the city. In 2013, we investigated 60 fires. We had $3.5 million in loss. One million of that was Ukrainian Christian Center. We not only investigated that, but alcohol, tobacco, and firearms assisted in that investigation because it was a church. So, as you can see, about half and half incendiary and accidental, and then we have about 8% undetermined. And it doesn't mean we don't know what the cause of the fire is, it's just we can't scientifically prove what that cause of that fire was. We can have an idea, but we can't be on the shadow of doubt and say what that is. So, again, it's become more trained and proficient in city and department records management to ensure that we're doing it correctly and we're efficient. And we want to identify and inspect businesses that require hazardous materials permit. Now that we know which ones are out there to inspect, which permits do they need? Because there's many different types of hazardous materials permits they need. Emergency Management, we have two folks in Emergency Management. Deb Needham is the director, and Mindy Mattson is the coordinator for that. And they do a lot of work in their office. A lot of their work tends to coordinate all city departments together. So, it's not just a fire thing, it's all city departments, because we know if we have any sort of disaster, whether it's a man-made or a natural disaster, it may impact one or more departments. For example, on the Howard Handsome Dam, the Public Works Department would be the primary agency on that. Or if it were a riot, for example, that might be a police, be the lead agency. So, it could change. But we really rely on other city departments to help us out. So, if we have a sheltering needs, Community Services comes in and assists with the sheltering needs. And so, it's really a broad-based program that impacts every city department. Lots of accomplishments, I'm just going to brush on a few of them here. On page 3-82, the first bullet point, generated revenue through disaster reimbursements and emergency management, between two declared disasters, one in 2009 and one in 2012, and these are like snowstorms and windstorms and light, we were able to recover from the federal government $2.3 million. So, that helps offset our costs associated with responding to those. Conducted a citywide damage assessment. These are the kinds of things that they do, is go out and do these damage assessments. Developed refresher training for the Emergency Operations Center. So, they worked with Community Services this year to go through and say, okay, what's your role if you were to show up at the Emergency Operations Center? And so, Deb and Mindy kind of walked them through and made sure that they were trained. And these two pictures of all the plans there, they've been really active in ensuring that our plans are up to date, that they're usable, that they're not just documents on a shelf, including some of the documents that they've worked with are county-wide documents, so that makes sure that we have good coordination between the county and the city. So, again, there's a whole bunch of accomplishments there. You can read them all. It's just, it's amazing how much work they do in emergency management, but it wouldn't be possible without the coordination and the cooperation of all the other city departments. Okay? Next slide. So, their goals for 2015 and 16 is revise a comprehensive emergency management plan, develop a coordinated citywide social media team for emergency situations. One of the things we found at the Regency Woods Fire, especially when you're doing a lot of evacuation, we have to rely on different methods of communication in order to reach out to everybody. So, that, we can't really rely solely on radio and newspaper and TV. We, the social media has a huge role to play in that, and there's a lot of social media going on right now as we're speaking that we could tap into and utilize that to our advantage. Okay? And then revise the Emergency Operations Center to make sure that it's, it can function efficiently. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The judge's timing is impeccable. He just walked through the door, and he's up. Or is Bonnie going to do it all? You'll let him help you a little bit?
Good evening, I'm Judge Harado, the municipal court judge here in Raton, and we're here to present to the council the 2015 annual budget. I want to thank Bonnie Woodrow, the Court Services Administrator, who is here to my left, for putting all this together. Her tireless efforts allow me to do what I do, and so, I don't really understand a lot of what she does. So, she's really, really been very helpful. She's put together a presentation, and once she has completed her presentation, then we would be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for allowing us to present our budget request to you for the next two years. Again, my name's Bonnie Woodrow, the Court Services Director. First of all, I'd like to say, there's five objectives that we strive to attain each day, and it's contained within our mission statement. We're to be objective, accessible, provide timely resolution to all of our cases, the protection of rights of all individuals, and the dignified and fair treatment of all parties. It's what we try and do every single day for every single case. That being said, we are a department of 13 employees, broken down into three divisions: Infraction, Criminal, and Probation. We have an operating, we're requesting an operating budget of a little over $2.1 million per year, and we are optimistic that we will receive revenue in about $2.4, a little over $2.4 million per year. Our budget highlights, we have a reduction in our FTEs through attrition. We've reduced our FTEs by a total of $3.5 since 2012 due to budget negotiations in the 12-13 budget. And that's due to a significant reduction in case filings over the past six years. And I have a slide that we can go into over filing reductions. We utilize our performance measure to gauge where we are meeting our customers' needs and to gain a better understanding of their expectations. We survey our courtrooms two times a year, a full calendar, and of all the surveys, fair treatment and timely resolution is the top priority for people responding. There was one area of concern, and that was access to information. And to resolve that, we increased information on our website, we included additional information on brochures for when hearings are set, and we put pamphlets in the clerk's office and in the courtroom. We also have front counter and phone service as well. So, we're trying to meet the needs for access to information. There's a lot of information on this court filing screen. Criminal and parking have decreased by approximately 44% over the past six years. Criminal and parking have decreased by approximately 44 percent over the past six years. It's significant. But questions regarding the reasons for the decline, we're not privy to those reasons. And the Police Department and the Prosecutor's Office would be better departments to answer those questions. There is one piece of information that I can give you, and that was in 2012, the Supreme Court came down with a ruling regarding public defense caseload standards. And the ruling had the, it could impact local jurisdictions in a very, in a very negative manner expense-wise. So the executive and the court and the prosecutors met to try and figure out a way of, to discuss ways to control public defender costs without sacrificing the quality of the defense. And we concluded collectively that the elimination of direct filing by the Police Department into the court, and instead shifting the review of the case prior to filing with the court to the Prosecutor's Office would help in the endeavor of containing our public defender costs. That could be one reason that the filings are, that they have declined. In that capacity, we have referred less to our public defenders, less cases to our public defenders.
Bonnie, can you explain that a little bit more?
Oh, sure.
So rather than, at least aside that it's going to go to court, you're saying...
For criminal cases, the case is diverted to the Prosecutor's Office to review to see if it needs more information, if they can actually proceed with the case and gain a conviction. And if there's not, they can send it back to the Police Department for additional information, and then receive that information from the Police Department and then file it with the court.
And so as part of that, you're actually seeing fewer cases? Is that because...
I don't know if that's the reason, but that was one way that we tried to contain the public defender costs.
Okay, so you're not sure.
My city attorney can answer this too. I think the answer, at least in part, is yes, there are fewer cases. Because before, virtually every case that, every arrest that was made, there would be a file, and then the city attorney's office would look. And in some cases, after they'd been filed, there'd be determination made to no longer pursue that. Now, we're doing what most other court systems do, and that is you let the prosecuting attorney take a look at the quality of the case, the amount of evidence that's there, and everything else, and determine whether or not, in fact, there's enough there to take it on through the court system.
And we have certain cases where we have a first-time offender or something of that nature that we reduce the charge before it really gets to the point of having a public defender assigned. Excuse me, the whole purpose of this is because the public defense standards are going to take effect in 2015, and the number of cases to each public defender are limited to what we believe are quite a, quite a number fewer than the public defender could handle. But that's the Supreme Court's judgment in its infinite wisdom. But we're trying to keep the number of cases that get assigned down and let only the cases that really need to go to the public defender, go to the public defender. We believe that every defendant should have a vigorous defense. But if there's a break coming, it should, it should be coming up front. Or if the case isn't quite ready to go to trial, we could have the officer then do more.
But you're not saying this as, that we're letting a lot of people out necessarily?
No, that's, that's one of the things we're working very hard not to do, is simply give a bunch of people a free pass that don't deserve it. That's one of our criteria, is that if this person has a history, or it's a particularly egregious offense, we're not going to dismiss the charge or reduce the charge simply to avoid having it go to a public defender.
And there's a couple of other case reduction dynamics in that. When you had direct filing, a police officer oftentimes would file three separate cases, all occurring at the same time. Everything's the same, except it's filed on three separate charging documents. That counts as three cases. And so when you're appointing a public defender, when that happened, you were appointing a public defender three times. And so it reduces the amount of monies that are paid for public defense because now those cases are being consolidated into individual counts in the same charging document by the prosecutor. The process that's being used now is best, actually best practices, is where you have an attorney who actually vets the case to determine, do I have a case that should be filed? If not, what do I need to do with this case in order for it to be filed? And so you end up ultimately with fewer dismissals. So those people who, to address your concern, needed to be prosecuted are being prosecuted, and their cases are not being dismissed.
Regarding photo enforcement, it has decreased approximately 33 percent over the past six For a couple of different reasons, in my estimation. One is the elimination of Raton High School location and the public awareness campaign. You're not going to make the same mistake twice, so. We, this year, we did have the addition of three new school zones and one new red light intersection that we are fully on board with all of those locations. So we should see an uptick in the number of filings from photo enforcement. And on the revenue side, we heard loud and clear from the Public Safety and the Finance Committee in 2013 regarding the amount of fines and collections. And we, it is staggering. We have approximately 50,000 cases, over $12 million in collections. And we listened, and we, since filings were down and we had some available staff time, we vigorously have been working a cleanup effort on our collection cases. And we were, we were able to increase revenue, the locally retained revenue, even though we had a decline in filings. So we listened. And the second thing I want to say about revenue is, we also listened to our Raton results and our surveys. And the majority of people want online payments. So we had an outreach campaign, put our website on every citation except for the old paper citations. All the sector citations, parking, photo enforcement, on all of our brochures, on all of our forms, it has payment, online payment information. And we have seen a dramatic rise in online payments. So our current initiatives, this is really exciting to me. This, and this is the way that we absorb the three and a half positions. We are transitioning to electronic content management system. And with our additional staff time that we've had, we were able to scan over 750,000 documents into Laserfish. And we're almost, we're almost there. We're 80 percent digital complete. Our last piece for this digital process is going to be developed in conjunction with the public defender and the Prosecutor's Office. And that's, we're partnering with Sea-Tac and Tuck Willa Municipal Courts to develop an electronic form, a judgment, sentence, and a guilty plea are the first two forms. And we couldn't afford this individually, but we can collectively. So each one of our, each one of us asked our cities for approval to pursue this electronic document program. And it should be implemented and up and running by mid-2015, and we'll be able to complete the process and become totally electronic. And I know the judge is going to have a little bit difficult learning curve when it comes to this, but I'm confident that we will...
I'll be retiring soon.
Terry, do you have a question?
I just, I'm just noticing that these aren't all of the partners that are within SCORE. So the other ones all have different kinds of forms. Is there any thought about making them the same across the line, or is that just not possible?
I wasn't at the table when the SCORE conversation took place, but evidently getting eight judges to agree on forms is difficult. So we worked, we pared that down to three. And I have a very good working relationship with the two court administrators. So we were able to work together and have our judges agree on content and form, and it's, I...
You're getting there.
We're getting there. And other cities have come, Bremerton, Fife, Linwood, they've all come down to look at what we're doing because we're pioneering on a shoestring budget, which most municipalities are on. And it is impressive. It's fun, too. But on our customer service side, we are maintaining our service levels with decreased staffing capacity. And we're listening to our customers and using Raton results to gain a greater understanding of their expectations. No fee increases are considered, being considered in this budget cycle. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Thank you very much, and I really applaud you for your efforts of working with the other courts. And I would envision, from my experience, that when you're successful, the other people who are dragging their feet will come, come on board and make it even a better program.
I agree.
So I admire your, starting with three, because it'll grow from there, I'm sure.
It will. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for coming. And the next one is administrative services.
And Mr. President, while they're leaving, I'll just reiterate, excuse me, something the judge said at the outset. I think we've, we feel like we've got a real good collaborative relationship with the court. And Bonnie's been a huge factor in that, but I think, you know, Terry's direction to her has been helpful as well. So dealing with how we work with the public defender issue with the Supreme Court decision and everything else, just one example of where frankly, everybody, even the public defender, was trying to find a solution that was workable to all of us. So it's, you've got, I mean, all elements, Police Department, the city attorney's office, the courts, and the public defender, all trying to work together to make sure that we get good representation, as was mentioned in the mission statement, but do it in a way that's as efficient as we possibly can while still making sure that people have their day before the judge.
Good evening, counsel. Again, I'm Yiwang, Administrative Services Administrator. And thank you for the opportunity to present the department's budget tonight. The department's budget starts in section three, so page number 3-25. And a lot of the information will be, you can find in that section. First of all, the department currently with proposed budget will increase our staff from 38.5 to 42 positions. I just want to say that compared to 2008, we were, with authorized 52.5 position at the time. The department at this time is organized with three divisions, the finance area, the information technology, and city clerk. As you can see, Jamie Thomas is the finance director, and Mehdi Sadrri is IT director. And currently, the city clerk's position is vacant, but Jason Seth is acting city clerk. The department's mission overall is providing systems and process that enable efficient, effective, transparent, and accountable management operation of the city. Really, we do not generate revenue per se, but we collect them and will provide system to make sure everything runs smoothly. And our core services with the three divisions, we provide legislative support, the basic council meeting process, and we manage the citywide records and also fulfill public records requests. And we also coordinate a hearing examiner process and provide supports where necessary. In finance area, we'll provide all the operations related to financial matters, as well as the budget and financial planning and accounting and reporting are in the, in the area. And then in IT side, that's both data and voice communication systems, infrastructures and everything associated with that, as well as software application development and support service. And lastly, but nonetheless, also the user actual support. The department's budget for the proposed budget period is about $9.3, $9.5 million per year. And again, as I mentioned, we have, we are proposing 42 staff. And the department's services are impacting both city and health area, as well as representative government. But majority of our staffing and resource is internal support. The three and a half position, the breakdown of that, is we are proposing to add a half senior financial analyst positions, position. We currently have a half-time vacant position. This will allow us to make a full-time position for both recruitment, as well as we think we'll have better retention possibility for the position. And we definitely can use the position to do more overview, as well as support for frontline operations, as well as a lot of other analytical work. The business, two of the positions add are in IT area. One is a business slash system analyst position, which will provide more programming capability, as well as support departments in their business-oriented software. And we really have seen a lot of, we have a lot of major complex softwares require a lot of in-depth understanding of the system in order to provide better support. And we are lacking both the capability in support side as well as programming side. A lot of times, we can do small automation kind of program, a utility kind of program can allow our user do a lot more, much faster. And we think that will be a very good investment in the city, from a city user's perspective. And the service desk technician is the second IT position. We have been staffed with two persons in service desk area. And those two persons basically answering all of our service desk requests. And they are basically running from call to call. And a lot of times, we'll need to have people wait before they can help them. And so this will allow us to reduce the frustration of users and provide better support to users. And last position is a deputy clerk slash records management position that we currently actually have this position on a limited-term basis. We started a limited-term position back in mid-of-2012, on a two-year trial period, to consolidate all the public records requests to city clerk's office. And then the person will be able to collect the data, collect all the response or fulfillment record, and do the reduction, and then provide the information to the requester. And so that's the idea for that position, and we currently keeping one person busy. And we, based on the stats I will share with you just in a couple minutes, that I don't think we're seeing a decline in the number of public records requests. And there's one other, actually pretty large dollar amount adjustment in our budget, although it, on the expenditure side, is very large, but there's also compensating revenue comes with that adjustment. That is our banking service and credit card processing fee is now nearing almost half a million dollars a year. The banking service is a smaller portion, the larger portion are really is a credit card. City of Raton is one of the first adopter of allowing customer paying all their bills with credit cards. And so we are seeing the growth in all areas, from utility bills to permit payments, for example. And we also have some enterprise kind of activity, like golf courses. By nature, they take credit card, airport, for example. So those operations, the customer demands using credit card as a way of ease for their transaction. So we've been very accommodating in allowing that, which translates into a higher fee as well. Now, our agreement with our current US bank is actually very favorable, and we earn a very favorable interest on our checking account that allow us to use that interest earning to offset the cost of those fees we're incurring. But again, we are trying to account for both the costs, as well as interest earning in their totality. In the past, we net them, net the two, and so show a smaller cost. But this way, we can fully account for the cost and revenue. And we made this adjustment actually a couple of years back, and this is just trueing up of what our practice in couple of, last couple of years. What we did in the last couple of years, we used carry-forward budget adjustment to address this cost difference. What we did in last couple of years, we used carry forward budget adjustment to address this cost difference. And lastly, but not the least, is that we are seeing our state audit cost increase. And we have seen the number of hours increase in the past couple of years. And then they are also proposing a rate increase in the next time, next year. Yeah.
So do we not pass along through the, there are the additional?
Credit card payment? Currently, we have not. They are potential that you can charge a convenience fee. But really, the credit card company is frowned on that practice. And we cannot charge, different charge. With one customer paying credit card by, versus another person want to pay with check. And that's really violating the credit card company's rules. And so we have not really done that. What we have done in permit system, permit costs, for example, is we increased this as part of cost of doing permit business. And then our fee recovery will cover the cost. So we do, we do adjust really everyone's rate to accommodate for those additional costs of doing business.
Yuen, I think the other thing that we have found, because I was really in on the debate on this, on taking credit cards, is that we actually get more money in with credit cards. Because people will use their credit card to pay their water bill and all the other stuff. And so we get, get our money upfront. And they, those people then have to pay the interest later. So it was the banks and, I spent a lot of time on this. And they actually convinced me that long-term, you act, we actually make out at lea, at.
Difference with debit versus credit?
They.
Is associated with that also?
Different kind of cards carry different kind of charge. I think councilmen are probably very familiar with that. There are certain cards, especially business cards, typically has higher charge. But we do definitely monitor that pretty closely and try to reduce the cost where possible. And I think in the long-term, we're going to.
But the customer is paid more for this convenience?
Yes.
So we're not eating it all, or they are taking care of some of that, right?
Do we shop our rates at all, or?
I'm sorry?
Shop our rates?
We, there are certain portion of it we could do. But some of this are directly tied to, depends on what application we use. And that application has their preferred vendor. And so some of them, we could unbundle, but the others, we cannot. And so we have to use that vendor as long as we decide to use the software. And so there are some of those limitations as well. But definitely, we're keeping very high attention on this one. And we'll continue to manage that and see if there's chances or opportunity to reduce the cost.
One other question, you said there were additional audit costs?
Yes.
From the state auditor's office. Is that because it's taking them longer, they're finding more errors, they're, I mean, what's the reason that that is?
So there's a couple of explanation. One is that generally, the accounting rules become more complex. And the accounting practice requirements are more. We have many more pronouncements that we need to follow today than, say, ten years ago. And all those rule, they supposed to be able to examine. But they really don't have all the time to do all the examinations they need to do. And so they are trying to adjust their time to accommodate some additional audit they have to do, they supposed to do, to get reasonable assurance that our financial report is accurate. So that's one aspect of it, just additional rules and requirements that we need to follow and they need to audit. And the second piece is that their costs of doing business also increasing. The hour increase, actually, they being, it's being pretty uniformly and universal. It's not just in Renton, but other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions as well.
Can I give you an estimate of, I mean, how are you budgeting this then, if they're changing annually?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Well, I'm just wondering if you know how much it's going to cost. If they're changing this annually and they're signing, well, this time we're going to do this and check this one. How are you able to estimate?
Determine. So the checking time is one thing, and then the hourly raise another. And our total budget in the audit is going to be about hundred thousand next year. And so we've been gradually increasing, but so, it's the first time extending hundred thousand. Okay.
We, we do work with other cities. And if we see that maybe there's an opportunity for the auditor to be a little more efficient or effective in how they do things, we've, we have corresponded back with their regional directors and managers and just with some suggestions. And they've so far been pretty responsive to that, just to try to, if in their process, there are, we're seeing some things that would make it more efficient. They're usually pretty good about trying to follow those. So I think there is a pretty good relationship with the auditor's office. It's, it's difficult for them to keep experienced staff. We all hire them away. Jamie came from the auditor's office. So, so they, when they get a really good auditor, a city will snap them up. And so they're, they're usually in a process of training as well, which tends to slow down the audits.
The next slide is performance measure. I know the print is very, very small, but this is on page three dash twenty-seven. And I just want to highlight a couple of things. I know you couldn't see it very well. But in the business license, we actually have performance measures in terms of auditing to find new employees or new business, as well as response issuing time. In two thousand thirteen, right after we implement the new permit and licensing system, we really need to rebuild our database almost in the new system to create the contact and create the billing information. So it definitely diverted our attention to the audit side. And so we definitely is lower that, in that end. And then on the accounts receivable toward the lower, the, there's a change from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen between point two percent collection, or aged account versus two point six percent in two thousand thirteen, primarily because we have some large, very large grants in two thousand thirteen. And some of those grantors are not paying very timely. And some of them is because they need additional information and some for other reasons. But because of those large grant bill, bill been sitting out there for a while, so increased our percentage. But we just want to show that we are monitoring things. So here are some other stats we think are interesting. I mentioned earlier that we don't believe our public records request number is going to decline. And this year so far, for two thousand fourteen, we already have three hundred forty-eight, which is more than two thousand thirteen, the full year number. So we're estimating this year, we probably will end up about four hundred total records request. Really, the ones that take time are the large volume request. And also, those requests require review of actual language, like email conversation or communications and reduction. And each reduction, you need to say which chapter, which section of the law you are reduction based on. And so that takes quite a bit of time as, as well as skill. But I'm glad to say that our current occupant of the position is really very good in doing that, very detail oriented.
So Yuen, are we, I'm just looking at the, the number of?
Requests.
Versus the number of requestors. Are we, you know, still dealing with just a few requesters for additional information? Is it?
Yes. Yes. And we try to fulfill in increments. So if they, they don't come and pick up the initial increment, then we don't have to take it to the next step. So rather than do everything upfront, we try to use different techniques to see if we can minimize. Utilizing billing, customer call, wait time. And since our new phone system, we are started tracking that. We are actually seeing that our average wait time dropped from forty-three seconds to thirty-nine seconds. I know for those people need to hold longer, they feel for, it's like forever. But we really try to minimize those wait times. We don't want people to hang up and just so frustrated and decide not to talk to us. Let me see. One thing I thought is interesting that our auto pay or online pay actually been increasing over the years. But in two thousand fourteen, we saw a reduction of people actually using the auto pay or online credit card payment. I don't know if it's anything related to the Target incidents happened toward the end of two thousand thirteen. And, you know, Home Depot is pretty recent. And also, the JP Morgan incident is pretty recent. But the data security, I think, become a bigger issue for some of people willing to use online transactions. Our daily email perfect is now reaching almost ten thousand dollars, ten thousand emails per day, in out boxes cumulative. We actually start, this is the first time we have seen our service desk request actually is lower. We don't know if it's because we're not logging all of the activities, just because they're running from one to the next call request, or if it's actual work reduction. But we are also monitoring that as well. We have a lot of accomplishments, but I'm not going to read through this. I just want to highlight a couple of items in each of the division. And this is IT area. We actually implemented all police and fire in-car data connection. We provided an in-car modem with antenna, so they can get better reception. Versus in the past, they had a data card in the computer, which has some connectivity issue and not, not as reliable. The Valleycom cap conversion, it's seven years in the works until we finally turned it on earlier this year. You know, we support them clearly, the departments, police and fire, as well as Valleycom did majority of the work, but we definitely is part of it. I do want to mention something that we are currently working on an open data portal. We have not launched it. It's supposed to launch in November. But we are providing information in the origin data form in the public. And then people can use that. If you, if you go to Seattle and King County, they have lots of raw data on their information site. And we're hoping that people will start using that and help themselves more. In the city clerk's area, I just want to compliment the division that they are really working very closely with a council liaison and working together. They were able to streamline the, the agenda process for the committee meetings. And we tried to eliminate duplication. You know, in the past, we have some efforts that really duplicated. I think with the help from Julia, as well as Jason working together, they were able to do that and make a few of those changes that's more streamlined and effective. And also, there's one major project, actually, a citywide project, that is we're starting to migrate city records from various media into laser fish, digital record system. And so we currently have hard copy records. We have records on microfiche, microfilm. And some of those old ones, we're not going to convert. But the newer records, we start putting them into scanned image. And so anyone can access it from anywhere. So that's the future, the long-term goal for the city is become totally digital record system. Finance side, I think we have a number of large accomplishments. One, important one is this year, we actually finished year-end process and prepare financial report in four point five months, rather than in the past, it usually take about six months and sometimes more than six months. So we are gradually reducing that time by streamlining the process and really doing a lot of prep work, that we're very proud of that record. And next year, we're going to drop it to four month. We also implemented electronic billing earlier this year. Again, we have about three thousand customer pick, pick that up. But they have not turned off their paper bill yet. We hope that they will eventually. Last but not least, we did receive an upgrade for a joint obligation bond from SMP this year as well. So next year, we have some ambitious goals as well. We will be developing an online and mobile service portal. And so people want to use mobile device, they can send in their work request, check their payment, do a lot of transactions probably on, in mobile, as well as other online format. And actually, we have a very good in-house programmer. We hired last year, just over a year ago, who, who's been very, very helpful in developing a number of applications, allow us to help our customer to help themselves. One other project, CED chip mentioned earlier, that's E Plan. We are going to launch E Plan review starting November this year. But it will be starting with building permit only. And we will be expanding that to other type of permits and wider accept, wider application. We think two thousand fifteen will be the year where we'll gradually expand our E Plan capability. Fee, we, as you know, that we are proposing a business license fee increase from sixty-five dollars per FTE to sixty-seven fifty. That is inflationary adjustment. We actually mentioned that earlier. This year, as well as in prior year, we, we decided one adjustment every twenty years is really not working very well for anyone. And so we want to make gradual and smaller incremental adjustments. The pad licensing fee, again, we are trying to ramp, ramping up to King County level. And we are still, our altered paths are already at the level, but the unaltered hasn't been adjusted fully yet. I think also mentioned earlier, technology fee, we are currently at three percent. And again, until we are fully implementing E Plan, we are going to keep it at three percent. Because E Plan is where we believe people will see the benefit. They don't need to print six row of plans to bring it into city hall for a plan review. So those are the fee increase adjustments. In terms of service sustainability, I think automation is going to be the key for everyone, not just in finance or not just in administrative service section, but citywide. We're looking at developing E forms people can fill and sign that can really simplify and streamline the process. Again, enable our customer to help themselves through open data application and also other kind of portal. Again, digital records. And if everyone can access everything in the city clerk's office remotely, that's the idea. Again, Renton results, we started two thousand seven, and we're still working on that. We continue to improve our management information. And information can help us to improve our operation. And we are also looking at citywide process improvement. We are trying to do two process review improvement each year, and we'll continue to do that, really to start bringing the lean culture into the organization. Again, update and review our policies and procedures. A number of them hasn't been updated for twenty years. And we just want to start bringing them all up and see what's still in use, or if we still need them or not. So that's all for our administrative service area. Is there any questions for counsel?
Okay. Seeing no questions, thank you, Yuen. And.
So I have a question. We have only about fifteen minutes left. We could do one smaller division. And actually, we have departments standing by to do it. If counsel want to continue, or we will just follow next week's schedule?
I think that's the city attorney's office, and he came in special for it. So why don't we?
The city attorney or executive, they?
Or executive. I don't care which one do you want to do. Is that okay, with everybody?
Together. Pretty?
Yeah, but they, each one of them has.
I mean, get you to there.
I didn't get you two there.
Christie told us we had seven minutes each, so we can do this in 15 minutes.
Seven minutes each, okay.
So we'll make this really quick, while you don't even, pretty much a repetition of what's in the, in the big book. So we start on a page 3-17, and the major change in our budget, just to get down to the bottom line, is $3,500 for this coming year. And that's entirely the extra continuing legal education, travel and training and licensing fee for the additional attorney that was added to our office last year. This is a good time to follow on behind the judge, and a good part of that extra attorney's duties were to vet the cases from the police department to try and eliminate as many cases as possible from filing before they got to the public defender. Also to spend time on emphasis on driving under the influence and domestic violence cases. So those are the particularly difficult cases that we handle in our office. So that's the biggest item on our, change in our budget. We have a small department, we have 12.88 employees. One person works seven-hour days, making that, that number a little unusual. Separated into criminal and civil divisions and administrative, of course. The criminal is more than half of our office, so you really don't see or hear too much from them. They're in the, in the court and doing discovery requests and so forth, but they're a key part in making sure that the court system works. The bottleneck in our office, the key, is to get the discovery request done. IT has done a good job of giving us a patch for information that flows between the various departments, and we've been able to cut down on that amount of time in that department. But we've also promoted one of the individuals to, or actually to a new position as a paralegal to help us with some of the more difficult cases and to handle such things as forfeitures and appeals to Superior Court. I just have a very few comments to make about particular accomplishments, but we like to always acknowledge the fact that, that we work together with other departments in the city, and almost all of our accomplishments are the accomplishments of the staff as a whole. But for example, this last year, we negotiated a half a million dollar settlement in a bid bond case on the Rainier Avenue project. I just mentioned integrated law base into our system to achieve paperless status. Going down the, keeping with the other departments, a legal review of public records requests. We don't get involved unless there's a necessity for public review or legal review of a public records request, but there are a surprising number that do. We negotiated and closed a multi-party purchase of the Highlands Library site. And as I think I might have mentioned to you before, I think that's the most difficult real estate closing that I have done in 40 years practicing law. And we had great help from CED and from community services in that effort. And we assisted the Transportation Division in a difficult, sensitive real estate transaction with BNSF Railroad. And there was many construction-related issues for Southwest 27, so just skimming over the top of some of the accomplishments for last year. Our big goals for 2015, 16 is staying within budget. We're also trying to get rid of a couple utility tax cases, one by AT&amp;T slash Singular, one that we did assist on with the help of outside counsel with Puget Sound Energy and their utility rates, utility tax rates. We have an upcoming potential utility tax issue with outside water departments. There's a case that says we can now tax their domestic water rates inside the city, so put them on an even keel with what we're charging our own citizens. So that's the thousand-foot level with $3,500, you can't talk about it.
Any, any questions for the city attorney? Okay.
Thank you.
Pretty, you got about seven minutes. We'll take all the time.
Thank you. I will try to take less than seven minutes. Priti Shridhar here with the Executive Department. Our budget details are provided on page 3-7 of the narrative. And the Executive Department has the mayor's office, the public defenders, which is contracted, and the public affairs group that includes several different divisions, the communications division into governmental relations, and anything that anybody wants comes into our office. I think the Executive Department is something like a symphony conductor, where, you know, what we do is kind of bring various talents together and make music out of it. And, you know, we have complex systems around the city, lots of different talent, lots of ranges of knowledge, and the goal is to bring it all together to meet the common goal of the city. There are, in terms of the upcoming budget, the 2015 budget, there are some changes you will see in the numbers. One of them is, of course, due to the overall increase in salaries and, you know, benefits and healthcare costs. But there are also some transfers of budgets that were primarily in different departments before. For instance, the intergovernmental relations budget has now moved to the Executive Department. It used to be in CED in the previous budget. And there's two, again, you know, highlights, two requests. One is to have a part-time intern to help with the social media program. As you are aware, again, you know, social media has become such an important part of overall communications, community engagement. You know, everyone who has a smartphone gets the pings every minute as you provide the information. We have had a very robust social media presence with our community. It started with, you know, CED during the time of Alex Peach, when, you know, he used to co-manage the site. Then Liz Stewart, very graciously from the museum with her interest pitched in. She's no longer able to do that, just as that world is expanding and growing. So we thought this would be a wonderful way to provide someone an opportunity, get them exposure into city government, and also help us with our social media requests, needs of the city. In terms of the area that, you know, the Executive Department is most focused on, it is representative government. This is the area that people can come to voice their opinion, to hear, to have a chance to be represented, and for us to kind of provide that information. The other small part of our budget is internal support and internal services, specifically the areas such as web support and the print shop are, you know, services for the entire city. I will kind of rush through some of these slides. As I said, you know, the mayor's office is a kind of an overarching strategy shop for the city to ensure that there's uniformity. There are lots of accomplishments, and each one of these areas is detailed in the budget section. But essentially, it's, you know, making sure that our business plan is implemented, that the key objectives are met, that the city's performance is accountable, measurable. We also, with the intergovernmental relations function, make sure that we advocate for our state and federal agendas. You know, again, for each of these, there are so many accomplishments that you are aware of, that we've reported to you on a regular basis, you know, from the funds that we've received from the state to the legislation that we've opposed or supported. And then, of course, one of the other areas that has been really important for the city is to make sure that the city, you know, is an inclusive city with opportunities for all, and there's a lot of work that we've done in that area and more that we're continuing to do. And of course, the area of community involvement and communications. One of the other things that we've embarked upon with a lot of emphasis is, you know, four key areas of priority. Again, these are citywide, these are the economic development priorities because it's something that we want, that's been robust for the city, and we want to continue with certain areas of emphasis to emphasize and focus on our vulnerable and diverse populations, to focus on customer service, enhance the productivity of our employees, and to look at a more sustainable and sound fiscal strategy. So I just, you know, I want to show pictures, say more than words. When we talk economic development for the city, we've talked to the area in downtown, we've talked Sunset area, and we've, you know, put a lot of emphasis there. One thing I want to note and kind of bring to your attention, the mayor mentioned this in his message also, we are looking for some state funding for the Sunset area as we're looking at the Sunset Neighborhood Park. So, you know, we're looking to see if we can get some funding from the state, from the capital budget for that. We've, you know, had Anita Horn join us with the city to do a comprehensive look at all our efforts to see what we can continue to do. And she will be bringing an update in detail to counsel on, in November, where she will give a comprehensive assessment of the work that she's done and also bring some specific recommendations as we go forward. We've done a lot in the area of customer service, internal and external, and this is something that we are going to continue to work on. Training is one of the key elements, leadership is one. One thing I did want to emphasize here is every few years, we do a customer survey. And this survey serves as a way for us to hear from our customers, but also have some strong tracking indicators, measurement, that goes to all our programs and that goes to answer many of the emphasis and, you know, objectives we've established as part of our rent and results. So we do have a request in this budget to have that survey, you know, money for us to be able to do that survey again this year. We did the last one three years ago. And again, you know, fiscal sustainable, having a sustainable fiscal strategy is key. We, you heard the proposal from Ewan on the VNO tax, and that's something that as a city will be, you know, implementing, working together with our community. And we'll keep looking at different ways that we can be sustainable, both in terms of, you know, revenue options and expenditure savings. And we'll keep Ewan here, which will help us, so. And this, just to repeat, communications is important, and we'll keep that as key. We'll make sure that we do that. As I mentioned, we'll look at the new medias that are there so that we're on top of it. We're ahead of the curve, and we're working with our community on that. So in the upcoming two years, you'll see a lot of things that we'll revitalize from our website to, you know, just new e-newsletters and things that we can keep doing. So that, I think I was seven minutes or less, but I'm open to any questions and any thoughts you have.
I think you covered everything that was in there. Any questions? Again, I would like to remind the counsel, if you have any questions of what we went over tonight or what's coming up, if you want to get them to Julia, get them out, and be sure the answers are here. So with that, we'll adjourn as a committee of the whole, oh, did you want something?